April 1st. Online today, we have Chair of Planning Deputy Mayor Lanny Yankoff, as well as Jackie Skamen, a board member. So I'm going to call our meeting to order. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest?
Not seeing any.
Not seeing any? Could I have someone approve our agenda today? Moved by Lee.
Approved.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I need someone to adopt the minutes of our Planning Board meeting that was held on March 4th. So moved by Bobby Kenny, seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor? Okay, is there any business arising out of those minutes? Not seeing any. We're going to move right into our first report, which is a variance request on 166 Royalty Road, PID 388694. And David Gungram, Manager of Development Planning, is going to present.
Okay, thank you Chair. I'll just wait for the presentation to load up. Okay. Good evening Chair, members of Planning Board, members of the public in attendance. The following application concerns property located at 166 Royalty Road, identified as PID number 388694. This is a request for minor variance within the R2S zone. The request, more specifically, is for a reduced minimum lot area of 323 square meters, 3,485 square feet for the subject property in the R2S zone, to allow for the future subdivision and development of six semi-detached dwellings with each unit on its own lot. It's noted that the R2S zone otherwise requires minimum lot area of 348 square meters, or 3,745.7 square feet. The proposed reduction in minimum lot area would be 8% versus what's required for minimum lot area for interior residential lots in the R2S. The minor variance request, again, is intended to facilitate development of three semi-detached structures, each having two units, with each unit on an individual lot that would be subject to future subdivision. The subject property is currently vacant, contains no buildings or structures, and is part of a subdivision that is under active development. The proposed semi-detached dwellings would be oriented facing north towards Essex Crescent, shown here on the screen, and would have driveway access as well onto Essex. Block 24-A, as shown, is subject to, would be subject to proposed, was subject to a proposed subdivision recently that partitioned it from the parent lot to the south, and would be subject to proposed future subdivision to enable the semi-detached dwellings to be built. And it's noted that the block 24B to the south contains the existing single detached dwelling, as shown. Some site context: The site consists of an existing vacant interior residential lot having 72.24 meters, or approximately 237 feet of frontage along Essex Crescent. Subject property is located within the low-density residential single R-2S zone, and is in vicinity of established residential uses, including single detached and semi-detached dwellings, which are all within the R-2S zone as well. The site is surrounded predominantly by low-density residential uses, and directly abuts a single detached dwelling to the south, being, as noted, the parent parcel from which the subject lands were recently severed from. The City of Charlottetown Official Plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choices. A variety of housing choices within neighborhoods are important, as they provide options for the needs of different people at various stages of their lives, quoting from the City Official Plan. Applicable sections include Sections 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 of the Official Plan with respect to this application. Just an additional overview: Semi-detached dwellings, as proposed on the subject property, are permitted use within the existing R-2S zone. However, the amount of available lot area is slightly less, approximately 8% less than what is required for minimum lot area for semi-detached units on individual lots. Due to the location of the subject property within an existing neighborhood, it is important for the planning process in this case to thoughtfully consider the context of the surrounding uses, and seek feedback from those with potential concerns. Next few slides have a bit of text, and so forgive me for reading it, but this is for the Board's purposes, as well as members attending tonight. As per Section 3.81 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, where a proposed development does not meet the minimum regulation pertaining to minimum lot area, an applicant may apply for a minor variance where the reduction in minimum lot area is up to 10% from what the regulation otherwise requires. As the proposed reduction in minimum lot area would be approximately 8%, the required application type in this case, according to the Zoning and Development Bylaw, would be the minor variance approach. Based on the site plan provided by the applicants, the future lots, subject to the minor variance application, would meet all other minimum requirements of the R-2S zone, for each unit of a semi-detached dwelling on its own lot, including the required minimum lot frontage of 11 meters, or 36.1 feet per unit. The future lots would have a depth of approximately 26.74 meters, 87.75 feet, which when subtracting for the required minimum front yard, being 6 meters, rear yard being 7.5 meter setbacks, and the required exterior side yard setback of 1.83 meters, would leave a gross buildable footprint of approximately 111.53 square meters, or approximately 1,200 square feet per each semi-detached unit on its own lot. On this basis, the proposed reduced minimum lot area of 323 square meters would still leave sufficient space to allow for establishment of a building envelope for a physically functional semi-detached dwelling unit, 1,200 square-foot ground floor footprint, that would be typical of lots in the R2S zone while meeting all remaining requirements of the zoning that applies. Going in further into our analysis, the main intent and purpose of minimum lot area requirements in the Zoning and Development Bylaw is to ensure that sufficient land area remains present on a given lot, such that a physically functional building envelope can be established, while leaving sufficient space for required yard areas and setbacks that meet minimum requirements for amenity space and separation distances from lot boundaries, to avoid conflict and compatibility issues with other nearby buildings and properties. As the reduced minimum lot area of 323 square meters for what would be uniform rectangular-shaped lots would still meet all of the noted aims of the Bylaw as they apply to the construction of a semi-detached dwelling in the R2S zone, the minor variance can be supported, as it would still meet the intent and purpose of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, as it applies to the regulations of the R2S zone for one unit of a semi-detached dwelling on one lot. Should the minor variance be approved, it would still allow for the creation of a physically functional building envelope for semi-detached dwellings across all lots that would leave sufficient space for all required yard areas and meet all required setbacks under zoning. As the requested minor variance would have effect upon a future application for subdivision, it is noted that Section 48.12.2, as found under Section 48, General Provisions for Subdividing Land of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, states the following: Quote, "Council may approve by recommendation of Planning Board, the subdivision of a single infill lot that is undersized in lot area and/or lot frontage, and that meets the average lot size of the existing developed lots on the street within the same zone. Such infill lots are to be used for single detached dwellings only, or for two-unit dwellings where permitted in the zone and where the lot has the minimum requirement for lot area for that use." On this basis, if approved, the requested minor variance would negate the need for the future subdivision application to be further considered by Planning Board and Council, as per Section 48.12.2, as the future lots created from the parent property identified as PID 388694 would conform to the Zoning and Development Bylaw in terms of their minimum lot area, as amended by the minor variance for this specific location. Moving on to public notification and feedback. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on March 10th, 2025, notice of the Planning Board meeting regarding the subject application was circulated to all property owners within 100 meters, 328.1 feet of the subject property, to request written comments regarding the proposed variance. A total of 51 letters were circulated to residents within the 100-meter circulation distance, with deadline to submit written comments on the application having passed at 4:00 PM on March 24th, 2025. At the time of writing of this report, a total of seven comments were received in response to the circulation by the March 24th deadline, all stating opposition to the proposed minor variance. A total of one additional comment was received past the March 24th deadline, also stating opposition to the proposed minor variance application. It's noted that residents in opposition to the application cited that should the request be granted, that it would result in negative impacts to property value, lack of adequate site drainage, lack of available parking for the proposed uses, lack of lot depth, increased traffic impacts, inconsistency with zoning to allow the proposed use, semi-detached, and lack of ability to provide for sufficient yard area and green space on each lot. With respect to each point, impact on property values is a matter that lies outside the scope of evaluation concerning land use impacts related to variance requests, and is not a matter that is regulated or controlled through the Zoning and Development Bylaw. With respect to site drainage, availability of parking and lot depth, future development of the proposed lots would still have to conform to all remaining regulations and setback requirements of the R2S zone, as no further relief from zoning has been requested. Notwithstanding the requested reduced minimum lot area, there would still exist sufficient lot area such that a viable building envelope for a typical semi-detached dwelling unit could be constructed on each lot that would meet all required set, all required, all setback requirements. This would still enable the creation of a unit on each lot, having the minimum requisite front and rear yard areas to allow for sufficient yard and green space on each lot, as per Bylaw requirements, as well as sufficient room to meet onsite parking requirements. Given that no encroachment into the required setbacks is proposed or anticipated, this would leave sufficient space to accommodate for appropriate site grading and drainage features, such as swales, and appropriate landscape contouring, so that adequate drainage can still be achieved. With respect to traffic concerns, should the minor variance be approved, the resulting development would add six additional required parking spaces under zoning, and therefore an average of 12 vehicle trips per day based on parking minimums and typical frequency of travel, i.e. AM and PM travel times. As per Section 3.8.5 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, where an objection to the request for minor variance is received within 14 calendar days from the date of the notice, the application will be referred to Planning Board to consider the request and the comments received in response to the notice. If Planning Board elects to support staff recommendation on the disposition of the application, in this case, recommendation to approve, then the decision to approve or reject the minor variance may be determined by the development officer. However, where the Planning Board does disagree with staff recommendation, then the application will be referred to City Council for a final decision. So just to conclude, from a reading from our report, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to Council that the following minor variance
was to be single-family dwellings. And I just wondered what the status of that covenant agreement is at the moment.
I'm going to have to let them answer that question.
Through the chair. I'm not aware of any restrictive covenants that would apply to the subject parcel itself. I will note that in that plan of subdivision, there are a number of lots that are already developed with semi-detached dwellings, and the R2S zone does allow semi-detached as a permitted use otherwise. And the vast majority of that subdivision is blanketed as R2S zoning, so.
So, Madam Chair, so what's the status of that original covenant?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of the status of that covenant, but the prevailing zoning does permit semi-detached dwellings as a permitted use, which would include, on this site, notwithstanding that it doesn't meet the minimum lot area requirement, so.
It seems strange to me, especially when you consider, Madam Chair, that there have been a number of violations of that covenant, if it meant anything. There's a multiplicity of multi-dwellings, multi-unit dwellings. And it seems to me that landowners, if they move into a subdivision where they have an agreement like this, that they, I think they have some merit in their argument that this shouldn't be approved. I mean, one of the factors that they're mentioning in the letters is that these multi-unit buildings, you get two in four vehicles per house. And there's a traffic issue which this particular development is not going to help. There's a potential for some safety concerns. Just, I think we need to give some due consideration to, if that covenant is still, has some merit or has some standing.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair?
Do you want to just see if there's an answer?
Oh, yeah, I'm just going to follow up after you get.
Do we know if they're, like, when there's covenants put in place, is that just the developer or is that something done with the city?
Through the chair, those covenants would not be enforced by the city. They'd be, they're private covenants, so they'd be only enforceable by the developer or by whoever the property owner of the day is, yeah. We wouldn't enforce them, yeah.
Okay, no, it's good. Okay, here worship?
So, this has history because I recall a full house public meeting that took place out at the Rad Royalty. Correct, Yvonne Ron was it 2010?
I'm going to just defer to Madame Palmer. Do you remember the date, the year? Laura?
Yes, Madam Chair, that would have been, I'm thinking around 2009, 2010, at the royalty. The developer that currently owns the greater portion of the land, Duncan Shaw, proposed to rezone the lands for various multiple uses. And at the time, it received a great deal of opposition. We have since done a plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment where a previous planner had changed the R2S zoning only allowed for 25% semi-detached dwellings or 25% semi-detached dwellings within the subdivision, and the remainder was to be single detached, and that was the existing zoning on the property. When the zoning was amended a number of years ago, probably around 2015, 2014-ish, she changed the zone to allow all semi-detached within the R2S zone.
So, Madam Chair, just again, this is information that the covenant is off the developer, but I believe the city, as you said, changed the zoning.
The city changed the, they changed the amount of units permitted in that particular zone. The zone remained the same on the land, but they changed the amount of density within that zone.
Yeah, yeah.
The covenants were originally put in place by the original developer previous to Duncan Shaw. They were a company of B.C., and they actually defaulted on the development. And at the time, I believe, there was the company that did the construction for them over, like, took over the subdivision because they had a lien on it. And then it was eventually sold to Duncan Shaw. And that's kind of the history of what's transpired. And I've, in the past summer, I actually subdivided out that parcel from Nora Bagnall, who was the original owner of the land. She was looking, she originally thought about subdividing those into lots, but then she didn't want the hassle of it because it would have required her to install the services. So she exempted out that piece of land to sell to a developer for further subdivision.
Correct, correct. So my point is, and I remember the meeting because it was the election, it was the year before the municipal election. That was my first time running for mayor. And I was at the meeting, and there was another controversial matter, land use matter on that agenda, and that was with the Grace Baptist Church. They wanted to build a apartment complex on the south side or west-east side of the church.
Grace Baptist Church.
I remembered. And not only that, Duncan Shaw had Phil Wood there, who tried to explain that this would be good because they were looking at multi-use. They were looking at apartment buildings in the center, commercial development. Well, as I said, you couldn't move in the room. And the council of the day overwhelmingly said no to it. And when I started campaigning in 210, 214, I quickly noticed out in this Windsor Park how everything went from ER1 to R2S. And these are, you have to take a drive out to look at some of these homes. A lot of money, a lot of sweat equity went into these homes because they were buying into a Brighton. It was a Brighton. It was going to be all ER1S, ER1L. So when I saw this application today, I said, here's another kick in the side to the residents that were in there right from the start. And if you go to the east of, is it Paddington Avenue? You go down Essex East, it's all duplexes. That was never the intent of this project, never. So when I see this, I think the few residents that showed up, and again, these residents didn't have an opportunity to speak in a public meeting because there was no public consultation. And I'm just saying, we have an opportunity to say, guys, this is not what we should be doing with something that these people bought into.
But your worship, today is an application, and I'm not disregarding what's happening for the residents, but they are zoned, R2S zoned. That's what the zoning is, and it's a minor variance today. So I understand the frustration for the residents that maybe didn't have that. But we're not here to look at changing zoning use. We're here to look at a minor variance, so.
The zoning was changed back in 214.
Right.
Like, we were told that it was just, it was a covenant issue. It wasn't a covenant issue. The zoning was changed of the council in 214 to 218, along with other changes that were made down to the waterfront that now we're suffering the consequences of that too. So I'm just saying, minor variance, major variance? I don't think it's a good fit.
And that's will be good on the minor variance, but I think we have to remember that it is zoned as an R2S, and all they ask is now is for a minor variance to allow this. So it comes back to what we've already been trying to really stay focused on is the actual use of the land based on the zoning that's in front of us in the application. So I'm just, yep, I'm just wanting to point that out. Deputy Mayor Yankoff or Jackie, do you have any questions?
No questions. I would just echo what Councilor McCabe said would be my rationale for supporting this application is that I agree with planning staff's analysis of why the minor variance could be granted. But when this decision does go to council, I think including that context about what the intended use of, or the intentions of the neighborhood back 10, 15 years ago were, and sort of providing them that context when making their decision with the ability to consider more factors than just land use.
But this won't go to council if we support staff's recommendation, will it? Or will it still go on to council?
Through the chair, it'll only go to council if planning board disagrees with staff recommendation, yeah.
Right, so it'll stop here. Deputy Mayor Yankoff, do you have any questions?
Just more of a point of clarity. The recommendation then, in my opinion, is not worded accurately because it should say the Planning and Heritage Department encourage the planning board to recommend this based on theirs. And then it should also then outline that should they not recommend staff's recommendation, then it goes to council. Because the way it's worded now is, if anyone at home is reading this, it just says it's going on to council so that we're just the recommending body today, but we're not the recommending body if we support staff's recommendation. So I'm just concerned that the recommendation should maybe be edited a bit to clarify that bit of information. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it was indicated in David's report that that would be the process that would be followed, that if the planning board today supports the recommendation to approve the minor variance, that it would not go on to council. It would just be permitted.
I know it was in the, I know it was in the report because I heard him say it and I read it, but it's not in the recommendation.
Okay.
That's all. And maybe it doesn't need to be there, but a lot of people at home will just quickly go on and read a recommendation and think, okay, great, I can still call my counselor. It's heading to council. I still have this other opportunity. But, as you pointed out to Jackie, if the board supports staff's recommendation, that's the end of it. It just moves on to the development officer to then continue on with the process.
Yeah. David, did you want to respond to that?
No further response other than the deputy is correct on that, yeah. Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I think what, I think she's right because the conclusion should be that planning and heritage encourage planning board to approve the minor variance. Because if we approve it here, the development officer takes it from there.
Yeah.
If we do not approve it here, then it goes to council. So it should just, in the conclusion, it just should remove council and just say approve the minor variance.
Thank you. Any other questions for Paul?
Yeah, Madam Chair, how close is the next semi-detached dwelling?
David, would you have the answer for that question?
Sorry, through the chair, could you please repeat? I didn't catch all that.
He's looking to see how close the next semi-detached dwelling would be to this parcel.
Just give me a moment. So, yeah, it's just one lot over. So to the east, there is one here. And these lots that are to the west shows as vacant on the air photo currently. I mean, conceivably, they could be subdivided, as you see, to the south here in the future. But the closest lot would be one lot over currently that contains a semi. And this lot is currently vacant here.
David, if you go down to the left of 388694, the properties there, 11, 116, yeah, that one, and the one beside it, they're both semi-detached.
Correct, yeah, they are, yeah.
And the ones behind it are vacant down to, they line up with Kingsburn or whatever it is there?
I'll note that the current air photo is a little dated. It's probably a little over six months in date. But as far as I'm aware, those lots are still vacant, yeah.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
If no variance were given, the owner, what's her name? Banel, no. What is it? Bagnall, Bagnall. So she subdivided the lots in behind. Currently, in those lots, there's three for sale signs indicative of three separate lots, I'm assuming. So if, let's take the variance, let's take the minor variance request out of the equation. What could be done on those properties with the three? Would they all have to be single? If there's three lots for sale, what can go on in those three lots that are for sale there?
Through the chair, they, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but as far as I'm aware, I believe that they might still be large enough for singles, but they wouldn't be able to do semis, and that's why the minor variance is before the board tonight, so, yeah.
So none of those individual lots would be able to contain a, there would be no configuration that would allow for, say, one semi-detached and two singles? Or two semi-detached and a single? Would they all have to be three individual or single-family homes?
As far as I'm aware, that's correct. They wouldn't be large enough for semis because of the minimum lot area requirement in the bylaw, yeah.
None of the sites?
None of the sites. If they were, if that block was divided into thirds, then they couldn't do semis, so.
They'd have to consolidate that land in order to, because it's still zoned R2, right?
It's R2S, but they're not that block that you see there. It's not currently subdivided. It is as you see it on the air photo, yeah.
Well, how can they, how can they be selling individual lots if it hasn't been subdivided?
Good question. False advertising, so.
Kind of, it's.
I can't comment on that. All I'm aware of is that that block has not been subdivided from what you see on the screen, so.
So it's just one big block right there?
It is currently, as far as we're aware.
It's the way it is.
We're aware, yes, yes.
And there's no other configuration that could work within that other than it's either, there's no other mixture that can go in there?
Not if you're divided into thirds, no. But if you were to split it in half, let's say, you couldn't have enough lot area to pull off semis or singles that way. I was approaching it as if you did it in thirds, as they are proposing to do, and then further subdivide each of those thirds into half for semis. A third, a third, a third split would not be, each of those three lots would not be big enough for a semi, possibly large enough for a single. If they took that block and just split it 50/50, then conceivably, you could build two semis. You could build two singles in that configuration, so.
Two semi-detached?
Yes.
As opposed to three?
As opposed to three. That is a possibility, yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't support, I couldn't support. I'd be, I could live, quite honestly, I could live with two, I could live with two in there, but I'm not prepared to support six. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Probably should be getting ahead of some, instead of going backwards and forwards, it might be helpful to do it the right way. But anyway, Sam, you're up, and then Deputy Mayor has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I think, David, you answered that if they were to, let's just, subdivide it to two lots, they don't really need to come to the, for a minor variance, and they can actually, because it's R2, they can actually build two semi-detached dwelling there, right?
Yeah, through the chair, Sam, that would be correct, yeah.
Okay, and just, maybe this is not a question, but because, you know, the lot sign, the sold, to be sold sign is there on, you know, three signs, I think it would be a good idea for the city to kind of notify the landowner that, you know, what they are doing is, you know, premature. And a letter could be sent to the real estate associations making sure that, you know, they follow, you know, that, you know, it's premature to put a sign when the lot has not been divided. I agree with Councilor Beck that, you know, it's kind of, you know, although it's R2, but also the nature of the subdivision is not really what it was intended for. However, I have a question on that. What percentage of the lots in this subdivision, when it was originally subdivided, has been into multifamily by now? Is it like 25% and above or? Is it like 25% and above, or?
Sorry, through the chair, Sin, could you repeat that question?
What percentage of lots in this subdivision had multifamily units?
I don't have a precise answer to that, to be honest, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't mention either that I'm slightly perplexed that the applicant wouldn't have to make up a decision first on a subdivision and then bring that back as an application. So I'm really struggling with being able to support something that, you know, could come back, you know, in a permitted way if they actually had a subdivision first. So I don't think I'm going to be able to support this either.
Thank you. Any other questions? No Counselor Beck?
Just a, this is more for information, but Lot 101 to the north there, right across the street from that subject property, there's a little inroad, yeah, right there, and that's leading into, it's undeveloped. What is he, has that area been zoned, or is there intention for anything on that further on down the road? Yeah, the 101-6294. That big parcel, yeah, that big parcel of land. Is there anything in the queue for that, or has that been, is there any, anything planned for that?
Through the chair, Counselor Beck, I'm not aware of any specific plans for that particular parcel at the present time. We don't have any active permit for that site. As you can see, the zoning is the same as the property is under review tonight, but we don't have any, we haven't been approached, as far as I'm aware, with any development proposal for that property to the north.
Okay. But the idea would be that if there was something developed, that would be the access point with there, between 108-8053 and 108-9606?
That's correct. And I'll just highlight that white portion here. That portion is owned by the city, has been left as some form of what I would call a road stub or access. And the size of that lot is, you know, sufficiently large enough that you could see some higher intensity form of development there than what's around it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I just think that the whole thing, in spite of the fact that it's a minor variance, I think there's an injustice being done to the residents, so I'll be voting against it.
Okay. Well, when we take this, Sin, do you have another question? Is your mic just on? Okay. So are we ready to take this to a vote, to whether or not we want to support staff's recommendation at this point? Okay. And then if we do not support recommendation from staff, it will move on to council. Yes, David?
Just to the chair, I know that there's some members in attendance tonight, and it's your discretion whether to allow anyone to speak, but I know someone just put their hand up if you wanted to.
Okay. Is it to do with, did you already put a letter in as far as?
Yes, I did.
With your points?
Some of them, yeah.
Okay. Is there something new information that you wanted to add on top of that tonight?
Well, yes, if I may be heard.
Well, if you want to go to the mic.
Thank you, Planning Board, Chair, for hearing me. My name is James Johnston. My wife and I have lived on the Royalty Road for 35 years. So with the, with one or two exceptions, we've probably been in the neighborhood longer than anyone. And as such, I feel I'm able to provide some history and some context, which from the questions and discussion here is sorely needed, I feel. Counselor, or, sorry, Mayor Brown is correct. There was a, at one point in time, this land that we're talking about was farmland. When we moved into our home 35 years ago, that land was under, was agricultural land. It was sold by the property owner, who now has this application for a minor variance. Development began, and I was at the meeting that Mayor Brown is referring to, and the turnout was quite spectacular. At that time, this land was all zoned R1, for single-family dwellings. And somewhere along the line, and I guess the Planning Department has illuminated that somewhat, for me at least, it was, that was changed to R2S. No one in the neighborhood knows how it got changed, why it got changed, and until tonight, when it got changed, but it was. And I guess as residents, I mean, we accept that it's now zoned for, zoned R2S, which allows semi-detached. And so in recent years, we've seen the semi-detached dwellings creep into our neighborhood. There are four lots on the north side of Royalty Road, and you can see them on the map there that have semi-detached dwellings on them. And in, on Essex Crescent, the east end of Essex Crescent, it has, there have, it has sprung up all semi-detached properties there. And both of these areas, there's a proliferation of vehicles parked in front of them, parked in the driveways, parked on the streets, parked on the lawns. It's caused safety concerns on the Royalty Road, such that the people in the Royalty Road don't feel safe to walk on the road. In fact, it's not a feeling. It's just not safe to walk there. There's no sidewalks on the Royalty Road, nor are there any sidewalks in Windsor Park. Regarding the covenants, I've not seen the covenants for Windsor Park, but it was a well-known, it was well-known at the time when the development started that there were covenants. And even today, people who've bought homes in the area in the last few years, I don't know if they had to sign covenant agreements, but they were told there was covenants, they weren't allowed to have things like clotheslines and so on. And that, to me, just seems wrong. But anyway, enough of the history lesson, and I apologize for that, but it seems necessary to provide some context here, because there isn't any, or there's certainly not enough. And I thank the, certainly thanked the Planning Board for their summary of the concerns that were brought forward through the, from the residents. I can tell you, from speaking with the neighbors, there are many more people concerned about this than have written letters. And, you know, it was a nice little summary of the concerns, but I don't think it really does justice to the gravity of people's concerns and the extent. The traffic is a concern. The fear, the parking is a concern. Safety is a concern. On that eastern end of Essex Crescent, I don't know if an emergency vehicle could get down there in the winter if they had to. And there's a lack of infrastructure and sidewalks, as I think I mentioned. And the point that Counselor Beck made about the, about the, right across the street from this, that was always intended to be a, to be a street, and there will be lots, and I have no doubt that it will be developed at some point in time, and there'll be lots on either side of it.
I'm not trying to, I'm following process, so I can keep it good. So you have about one more minute, because we have five minutes to speak, please.
Okay. Well, I'll sum up by saying that it's the process and the rationale and the reasoning behind this that bothers me most. The city has bylaws, including one regarding minimum lot size, and this is called a minor variance, but it's not so minor when you look at it. The impact of this is that there will be six lots created, so it's a minor variance times six, really. And it seems to me that there should be some onus on the person seeking the variance to show why it needs to be allowed, not the other way around, we as citizens having to defend why it shouldn't be allowed. There's nothing peculiar here about this piece of land. It's not, it's not a corner lot, it's not a, you know, an odd size or anything like that. It's a piece of lot, or a piece of land that is, that the property owner sold the land on either side of it, left this much for herself, and now she wants to, she wants to divide it. She could divide it into two, she could divide it into three, she could divide it into four, just not six, because she doesn't have enough real estate to do that. And it's just, it's precedent-setting as well. If you lower the size of this lot, who's to stop the developer from trying to do the same thing with it across the street? So we residents would urge you to not allow this minor variance, because it's, the impact is much more than minor, it's major. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, and we do have your letters while in the package with other residents. Thank you very much. So I think we've all had our questions. We're ready to call the questions.
Just before we get on the vote, could I please ask the Planning Department when this change took place and what process was followed? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry, Laurel.
So just to provide, Madam Chair, some clarification on some points that the last gentleman just spoke about. The property was never zoned R1L, it was zoned R2S. The difference was, the R2S zone was predominantly single-detached dwellings, and it permitted 25% of the lots to be used for semi-detached dwellings. When the zoning amendment happened roughly around 2014, the density within that zone was changed. It wasn't the zone, it was left as R2S, but they changed the zone to allow 100% semi-detached dwellings as opposed to 25%. And that was the difference. It was, it did go through public consultation through, because we cannot do that without going through the proper process, but it was done with a greater official plan and zoning bylaw amendment. So there was a number of changes that went through at that time. There were several public consultation events held. Those changes were published in the newspaper, so, I mean, it was out there, but it was kind of an intricate change, so, you know, it could be something that the public could miss if it wasn't, if you weren't, you know, reading their, reading the documentation, even though it was presented by staff. But that's what happened.
Could I just add to that?
Yep.
And I know you're trying to bring this down. So I've seen these, these public consultations where you put together huge changes, and they're wrapped into a lot of different little packages. And when you put it in the public media as an advertisement, if you don't have a keen eye, and Counselor McCabe and Deputy Mayor Yankoff, this happened to us in the last council with a couple of issues, that these omnibus, I call them omnibus bills or changes, they're not always caught. So if I could just get the date of when this public consultation took place, I'd like to just go back to the minutes, and I think we should share them with other members of council so that we have a better understanding. Because this is not the first time these omnibus changes come to the public and leaves a lot of cloudiness. And again, Laurel, I'm not, again, this is not a negative on the department, it's just you're trying to get things done, and it happens to come in these different forms. But I know when the density was changed, I saw a significant change when I ran in 2018. That neighborhood just changed like night and day.
Through the chair. I might want to note, this wasn't just this one subdivision, this was the R2S through the whole city. So many times, like, I mean, any official plan or zoning bylaw change where you're doing an overall comprehensive change of the bylaw or official plan, it happens in this manner, and that's why we hold public consultation. So it's not so much an omnibus change, it's that there's a lot of things happening at one time because you're amending a whole document, and that's why we, you know, we clearly articulate those things in a public meeting so that the residents, when they show up, they're aware of it, and it's advertised in the papers. But, I mean, it is, you know, it can be missed. A lot of, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is, a lot of people don't get involved until it actually affects them.
Yeah. So are we wanting to take a vote on the recommendation of staff? Or are you looking to defer? Or what are you wanting? Are we good to vote? Ready to do the vote? Question's been called. Do we want to, the staff is recommending that we approve this minor variance. So all those in favor of approving the minor variance for property at 166 Royalty Road? One, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, sorry, I lost the area for, I do not support the staff recommendation. I'd like to see the applicant come back and with a more concrete plan.
Thank you. And Jackie?
I would vote in favor.
Okay, so we have two people in favor. All those against? The rest? Deputy Mayor? Jackie and Lee McDonald. So this will have to go on to council for further deliberation and discussion, and maybe at that time, it would be helpful to have the information from the mayor, that the mayor's been asking, included in that package so that council can have that information at the time. And your letters and everything will be included as well for all of council to see. So thank you for taking the time to come out.
Counselor McCabe?
Yes.
Just because I'm online and I'm not able to see it, you had me down as not supporting staff's recommendation, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you. All right. So we are going to move on to the second report, which is, Laurel Thompson is here to look for...
Palmer.
I'm sorry, Laurel Palmer. I know, it's, you know what?
I earned that right.
The more that I try not to say the names in my head, I say them. Students, I do that at school all the time, they're like, mercy. Yeah, it's that, it's that, don't say it, don't say it, say it. Laurel is here, Palmer, to talk about a request to amend the current development concept plan agreement for Lot 2019-1 on St. Martha's Court to increase the number of the dwelling units from seven to eight units.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just as a point of information, I think we've all seen this proposal 90 times. I don't know if there's a necessity, Laurel. I know you'd be very thorough in your presentation and review of it, but I think we've seen it enough. Are we ready to, can we spare the details? If everyone's in agreement with that, I don't know if, or does it have to go that way?
I'm assuming she's going to have to, you could probably do a Coles Notes version of your report.
Yeah.
Right, in order, because I would say that she has to probably present something in case there is exactly an issue, but maybe a Coles Notes version, and maybe when we're looking at changing how we do things in the new zoning and development bylaw, these simple little ones can get changed.
Yes, Madam Chair, I did do a Coles Notes version of this one. So you're just going to see the slides that are there.
Let's move, Laurel, let's move.
And I do, okay. So, this is a request to amend the approved development concept plan for the parcel identified as Lot 2019-1, St. Martha's Court, PID number 119726, and to amend Appendix B, Comprehensive Development Area, CDA parcels, and permitted uses of the zoning and development bylaw. The purpose of the request is to increase the density in the lot from a seven-unit townhouse to an eight-unit townhouse. So the subject property...
So the subject property is approximately .99 of an acre and has frontage along Mount Edward Road and St. Martha's Court. To the north of the subject property is land zone CDA with, um, multi, multi-unit dwellings on St. Martha's Court. To the south is vacant land zone CDA, and to the east is Mount Edward Road and Low Density Residential. To the west is land zone CDA with multi-unit dwellings. I'm not gonna bother showing you the map, because I think you can figure it out. So this slide just shows previous applications, which, um, I've, um, spoke about before and in the public meeting. Um, you can see, uh, right here listed, we had, um, a number of phases, one, two, and three, and we're now up to, uh, lot 2019-5. On another application. So the zoning and development bylaw requires, um, that changes to a development concept plan has to go through a public, um, consultation phase. If it's not considered minor, um, we would bring it through, um, public consultation in the same, follow the same process as a zoning and bylaw amendment. It's the original concept plan, which was approved in November of 2013, um, and that shows the, uh, townhouse, the lot in question right here. And this is just an aerial view of the same thing. The existing site concept plan, this is the, uh, proposal here, and it's a stacked, uh, townhouse format. So, um, in accordance with Section 3.10 of the bylaw, on November 12th, um, it was approved to proceed to public consultation. On February 20th, 2025, uh, we sent out written notification, um, to, within 100 meters of the property. Uh, total of 23 letters were sent out, and we did receive one written response, but it was, um, wasn't in support or in opposition. It mainly had comments about, um, the process. So on March 6th, 2025, the public meeting was held here in council chambers, and there was no comments received from the public. Just another, um, example of the proposed site plan and the building elevations, floor plans. And overall, planning staff's recommendation is, um, for planning board to recommend to council to approve the density revision from seven to eight units on lot 2019-1, um, PID number 119726 of the development concept plan, which was approved by council on November 13th, 2020, eighteen, 2018, and to accept the working site and building plans for 2019-1.
Thank you, Laurel.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Laurel? Jackie, or Deputy Mayor, are you good with online?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either, thanks.
Okay. So can I, question's been called, do we support staff's recommendation to move from seven units to eight units? All in favor? Um, Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Jackie?
In favor, thank you.
That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Laurel. Hopefully. The final application in front of us tonight is a request to go to a public consultation for a request to amend Appendix A, the future land use map, from medium density to institutional, which would be looking to put a new school for LM Montgomery out in East Royalty. What's happens when we develop a whole community that fast, we need a new school. So they're looking to send us to public consultation. We'll turn it over to Laurel for, um, a quick report here.
My clicker's not working. There we go. So this is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone portions of the lands adjacent to LM Montgomery Elementary School. Subdivision PID number 1100528 and 193284 from medium density mixed-use residential to institutional, from low-density residential R2 to institutional, and from low-density residential single R2S to medium-density mixed-use residential, MUR. As well as to amend Appendix A of the official plan map for, for portions of these lands from medium-density residential to institutional, from low-density residential to institutional, and from low-density residential to medium-density residential. So, um, the subject properties are located within Montgomery Heights subdivision, uh, new residential development that's grown over the past seven to 10 years, um, in this area of East Royalty. The property is bounded to the north by low-density residential housing on Holmes Lane, consisting of R1S, R1N and R2S zone lands, so right up here. To the east by institutional zone land, LM Montgomery School and, uh, McWilliams Road, right here. There's medium-density housing consisting of MUR and R3T zone lands on the other side of, uh, McWilliams Road, you'll see it right here. To the south, there's low-density residential housing on Norman Drive in Terra Heights, consisting of R1L and R2S zone lands, just down here. And to the west with low-density housing on Livingston Drive and medium-density housing on Emily Drive and Lucy. So there's Emily and Lucy, and here is Livingston. So the property is, um, vacant undeveloped land totaling approximately 9.49 hectares, uh, 23.45 acres. And the government of Prince Edward Island has requested to rezone the property to allow for construction of a new elementary school on the site. The applicant is proposing to construct a new public road which will connect Terra Heights to Emily Drive and further subdivide the property along the south and west boundaries for low-density and medium-density housing. They also plan to construct a road which will co, connect Emily Drive to McWilliams Road to the east. So, um, this is the road that will connect Emily to McWilliams Road, um, Terra Heights up to Emily Drive here, and then McCray Drive is on this side. The subject properties were zoned for high-density, medium-density, and low-density housing under the East Royalty Master Plan, and the neighborhood has, um, seen considerable growth over the past five to 10 years. When Montgomery Heights subdivision was first proposed, the full buildout at that time was expected to be approximately 20 years. And, um, however, given the demand for housing over the past five years, the area bounded by McWilliams Road, East Royalty Road, and St. Peters Road has presently almost reached full buildout. So this area right here has pretty much received, um, full buildout. This was intended to be the, the second major phase of Montgomery Heights. So the area of McWilliams, um, uh, the area, this area of McWilliams, of west of McWilliams Road has seen growth in the past two years with the construction of Emily Drive, Lucy, uh, Crescent extension of Norman Drive, and further construction of Holmes Lane. I'm just gonna go back one, so you can see. So we're talking about, um, this area here, these, this is a recent phase, and then Norman Drive, this year just received an extension with, um, where it terminates in a cul-de-sac. So, um, the, this growth, it's resulted in a demand for apartment dwellings as well as other forms of medium-density housing. The immediate neighborhood is developed with a mix of townhomes, semi-detached, and single-detached dwellings. These housing options combined with an elementary school and parkland, um, have attracted many families with young children to the area. The influx of families, um, has resulted in LM Montgomery School reaching capacity. When East Roy, the East Royalty Master Plan was drafted in 2015, 2016, it was recognized that land would have to be designated to accommodate a new school. At that time, land was designated for institutional use on provincial lands north of North Ridge Parkway. So we designated land down here at that time for the school. So since then, the provincial government has a planned housing development on that property, and they've also indicated, the provincial government, that logistically and financially, it is more feasible to build a new school adjacent to the existing school. This approach would enable the province to expand upon existing infrastructure such as playgrounds and other features on site. The province has also planned to construct low to medium-density housing adjacent to the school grounds to provide housing for young families. The official plan, uh, addresses educational needs within the city and the region as a whole, and, um, this recognizes the importance that education plays in the growth and development of our population. I've included key points from the official plan within the report, and the concept plan for the new school development also includes a mix of housing topologies ranging from low-density single-detached dwellings to medium-density townhouses. I think. So right here, this is the, um, proposal for housing, and this will be a mixture of, um, townhouses, semis and, and singles, and then this is also proposed for housing. The pro, plan also promotes interconnectivity between neighborhoods with the construction of two new public roads that will connect Terra Heights to Emily Drive and a proposed road which will connect the school lands to McWilliams Road. Uh, this will provide interconnectivity between the existing subdivisions between McCray Drive and McWilliams Road. The proposed road configuration, it's in general alignment with Schedule III transportation of the East Royalty Master Plan. So if you look at the East Royalty Master Plan, when we designed it, um, this was a road connector that was supposed to go up and hook on through here, at that time, Horseshoe Hills, but we're bringing it down to Emily, which is just below. So it's generally in alignment, this would be Terra Heights, Norman Drive would be here. The official plan also supports mixed forms of housing to provide choices within neighborhoods. It's important to ensure that there's an adequate supply and variety of housing choices, um, with both affordable and market units in various areas of the city. And locating housing, uh, immediately adjacent to a school is considered good planning principles. I've included sections in the official plan in the report that address housing and the needs and, uh, housing needs and variety. And I would note that, and we're all aware of this, that the vacancy rate in the city is very low, and the official plan is various policies which support the efficient use of services, um, and that make neighborhoods stable, sustainable, and supporting more density in neighborhoods that are serviced. Integrating housing and educational facilities within immediate area, within the immediate area, tributes to building a complete neighborhood. There's also amenities in the area that are beneficial to young families, such as parkland and open space, and the city transit system is also easily accessible within this neighborhood. So the zoning bylaw requires, um, that, um, that, uh, council can either, um, approve, um, this proceeding to public consultation, or if they feel it's not applicable, they can, um, reject a proceeding to public consultation. That's covered under Section 3.103 of the bylaw. So in conclusion, um, this is a substantially sized parcel at approximately 24 acres. If the school's constructed, it will provide additional capacity to accommodate educational needs of children within the neighborhood now and well into the future. In addition, the site will provide additional open space and recreational facilities within East Royalty for its residents. It is the opinion of planning staff that this proposal meets many of the technical requirements for the creation of a complete neighborhood. Staff are also of the opinion that this request has merit and meets many of the policies and objectives of the official plan and the East Royalty Master Plan. Therefore, staff are, um, recommending for planning board to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation for the rezoning request. And this is the staff recommendation with all the technicalities included.
Thank you, Laurel. It's always good to get input from the community, need a place for the kids to learn. Do I have someone willing to put this on to move public consultation? Your worship?
Move the resolution.
Seconded by Bobby Kennedy, Kenny, sorry.
Just trying to get clarification with Laurel here. Laurel, is it, I'm, I'm looking at two maps, there's a proposed school north of Splendid Drive.
Okay.
Right? And, and then I'm going on my Google Mac, map, and that Splendid Drive is a wooded area, so it looks like a growth. Is it gonna be an extension to the exist, like, you got a couple of maps there, I'm just, just for clarification.
Okay, so this map here, this is the parkland, this is the wooded area.
Yes.
This is LM Montgomery School now.
Yes.
If I go back one, this is the...
Just trying to get...
Like, the whole map. So this is north of North Ridge Parkway. I think I'm in the right, yeah, 'cause here's East Royalty School here. This should be North Ridge Parkway here, I believe. Am I looking, yes, that's correct.
So North Ridge Parkway in...
This is the provincial lands in here.
Yes, that's the 83 acres.
Yeah.
So the new school is going there.
So this is like body blank drive and all that. No, this was where we proposed, for the new school to go, when we did the plan and back in 2015, 2016. Yeah, 'cause now we have a housing development that's happening here, and the provincial government would prefer to expand upon the existing school, so they've offered to purchase lands from Montgomery Heights subdivision. So if we go back, um, this is LM Montgomery School on the concept for Montgomery Heights.
Yes.
So the only portion that's being built in this next phase is this, which would be, um, the Norman Drive extension, so you can see here, and Terra Heights, um, they showed a loop at that time, but it, it will go up. And then the remainder of this, these lands over to about here, where my arrow is, is all gonna be purchased by the school. Down like this.
Okay.
And up and over.
Okay.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Did I, can you go back to the previous slide there, Laurel? Nope, uh, maybe it's fast forward. Oh, no, there we go, there we go, yeah. Um, up in that top corner, does that say, I don't have my, yeah, that one there, up there, uh, does it say future early learning centers on my readers here? In that northwest corner, yeah, right there. Is that, is that gonna be, uh, so the school is down, the proposed school is down southeast there, to your right, yeah, yeah. And then up there, is that, is that gonna be another part of this whole development, a future learning date?
They haven't indicated yet. This is concept, but they're setting these lands aside so that if they need to expand for future use, they have the land available.
Yeah.
So that's the purpose of the 24 acres.
Yep, thank you.
They'll buy and, and subdivide it to the industrial zone so that it's done. That's what they're trying to do, right?
And yes, Madam Chair, so they're not buying any industrial, this is all currently zoned for housing development, but they're purchasing it from Montgomery Heights subdivision, um, so that they can use it for future school use, um, playgrounds, soccer fields, those kinds of...
Yeah.
...of things. They are gonna continue with the housing right here, along this new proposed road, and here to the south along this proposed road.
Okay. So do I, someone to move this? You've moved it, seconded by Bobby Kenny. All those in favor of this going to public consultation? Deputy Mary Yankoff?
In favor.
And Jackie?
In favor, thank you.
So do we know when this will go?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm, I've been told that they are looking to proceed as soon as possible.
Okay.
They're in the queue like everybody else.
All right, is there any introduction of new business? Not seeing any. I need someone who do a motion to adjourn. Seconded, all in favor of that. Deputy Mayor and Jackie, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.